No.
Great. Okay, Dee Dee, are you okay?
Yes, I'm all set.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, good evening, I'm calling this public meeting to order. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening, November 1st, 2023, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Dee Dee? Oh, did we lose her?
Nope, Dee Dee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Okay, and I think Christopher is having technical difficulties. Okay, so I'll call the role of Commissioners. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Hurst.
Okay, great. First item on the agenda tonight actually has been continued. It was a notice of intent for an unassigned DEP file number, which is the reason for the continuance. So, next item after that is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061962 and Boston File Number 2023-052 from Fort Point Associates, Inc., on behalf of MCP 310 Northern LLC for the proposed redevelopment of parcel X within the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Industrial Park to construct two new buildings located at 310 Northern Avenue, Fid Kennedy Avenue, South Boston Resource Areas Land Subject to Coastal Storm Flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Ken Fields of Fort Point Associates.
Great.
I should be joined by Danielle Blake. Are you on Danielle?
I'm here. Good evening.
Okay, Danielle's with Marcus Partners and Chris Hodney?
I'm here. Hello, Chris Hodney, National Engineering.
Great. Okay, welcome. And so, Ken, who's starting off? I'm being presumptuous.
I'll start off.
Okay, so looking over the filing here, it looks like there's very little of this work that's actually being done in a resource area. So if you could focus on that work, I know there's other work being done, but that would be helpful if you could explain that to the Commissioners.
I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Thank you. Okay.
So, we're in the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park. These are the parcels in pink that have been identified in the EDIC's master plan for the Marine Park to help solidify funding for the water-dependent industrial uses in the park. I can go on to the next slide, which is a slide from the the RDA that this commission reviewed for the EDIC for the Marine Park. And you see here parcel X is basically on an island in the middle of this land subject to coastal storm flowage. We're far away from the water's edge. So we're just adjacent to some land subject to coastal storm flowage resource area. Next, please. So yes, we're going to construct two buildings on parcel X up to 742,000 square feet of general industrial and up to that's including general industrial and commercial uses. Just want to touch on that there's going to be an increase in the public realm. And today where there's existing surface parking, all the parking here is going to be either underground or in structured parking in nearby sites. Next. So this is just a FEMA flood map. Again, here we are in the island. In the middle of that, we can go right on. You've seen that we're adjacent to the land subject coastal storm flowage. Okay, I'm going to be talking about, you see, we are between parcel X between Northern Avenue and Fid Kennedy Avenue. The roads on the side, Access Road A, Access Road B, have multiple names. If you go out and look at street signs, but these are the official names we've been using with the EDIC. So we're going to talk about three intersections, two of which have impacts to land subject to coastal storm flowage, and one is we're coming right up to it at the corner of Northern Avenue and Access Road B. Next, please. Okay, this is our limited work. You can see where the flood zone encroaches to the edge of the project site. And we're showing you our limited work with the dash line. Next, please. Okay, so the reason for the project is our building needs a foundation, and there is a drain line that runs underneath the existing parcel. So we need to relocate that drain line so we can build the foundation for these two buildings. And what you're seeing here is the connection, the relocated drain line in Access Road B. And we can go on to next, and I'll go to each intersection. Okay, here we are at the intersection of Access Road B and Fid Kennedy Avenue. You can see it's impervious street, industrial neighborhood. Basically, we are going to trench in the street. Connect, if you can see where the green line crosses into the land subject to coastal storm flowage on Fid Kennedy Avenue. That's why we're here. We're going to temporarily alter that area. I think our notice of intent indicates permanent impacts in one of the tables. This is temporary. We're going to dig in the street. We're going to put in the pipes, and then we're going to cover up the street. We're not going to change the grades at all once we're done. It'll be repaved. Next, please. Okay, this is the same Access Road B, and here we are at the corner of Northern Avenue. And if you can see, our green pipe comes right up to a manhole that's just outside of the land subject to coastal storm flowage on this particular corner. And we can go to the next slide. Okay, and this is Northern Avenue at Access Road A, right across from the Harpoon Brewery. And you can see that we're putting in a new catch basin and making some connections to the drains that are in that area of the street. Again, we're going to trench it. The catch basin will be new. That's the only real alteration that you'll see. Grades will be restored to existing conditions in the street. Next, please. Okay, we have a landscaping plan. We want to provide the commission with the plan to indicate we're using the salt tolerant and indigenous species. I think what's important here is that the site is currently pretty much paved except for out on Northern Avenue. There's a strip of trees. We're going to add almost 30,000, I think 26,000 some odd square feet of new pervious area, which will help to collect stormwater, and it will also reduce heat island effect. Next, please. All right, so I've explained all our work, just so you know, these buildings are considering future sea level rise. So our ground floor is at the design of floor elevation for sea level rise, the design flood elevation. And our critical mechanicals will be one foot above the designed flood elevation. So resilient, not only today, but into the future. Next, please. Okay, this is just us talking up our project. We're very proud of the efforts that have been made in terms of climate resiliency and sustainability. This is a state-of-the-art building for an industrial use that typically takes a tremendous amount of energy to manage one of these buildings. And you can see we've really done a good job of reducing impacts to everything by by having such a sustainable and resilient building. And I think after this, it says discussions, so I hope I was brief enough.
Fantastic, appreciate it. Okay. I'm not sure I have any questions on this. I found the parking ratio pretty impressive, especially in that area. Just out of curiosity, is there a private shuttle?
Ken, if you don't mind, I'm just going to jump in there.
Go ahead.
I did want to clarify is on that slide, you had the .425 per thousand square feet. That's the parking ratio for new onsite parking spaces. I should say that our total parking ratio is .55 spaces per thousand, and the difference is being accommodated by renting spaces at market rates in the EDIC garage across the street. That is significantly lower than the parking that Boston Transportation Department deems acceptable for this neighborhood. I think the parking ratio is like .8. So as you can see, we're trying there with our efforts, and and so that .425 is just the new onsite parking in the garages.
Yep, no, .55 is still impressive. Thank you.
But to answer your question, you know, I'm sure that there, you know, we just haven't gotten to that level of planning yet. We are we are contributing a significant amount of money to the city's Transportation Mitigation Fund for, you know, transportation improvements in the neighborhood, and whether a shuttle is part of that to be determined, but I suspect it will be.
Okay, great.
And there is a Silverline stop right across the street or right down the street. It's bracketed by Silverline stops.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to veer us away from our jurisdiction. So I apologize, but thank you for that very helpful information. Okay, Elena, what do you have on that? Or on this, if anything?
I didn't have any questions that weren't covered by the presentation, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No, I don't have any major questions. All that drainage is under jurisdiction of the city itself, what calls the permit for drainage. But I was curious, when you said the mechanicals will be one foot above the design elevation, is there any reason they didn't put it like on the third floor or something? Is there a special reason, or that's just the design of the building? I guess if you want to answer, Danielle, you can. Oh, is John on? That's
That's the answer. So we, so Ken had mentioned that the critical infrastructure is the one foot above the three-foot raised first floor above the average grade of the site. John, answer your question. I think, you know, we thought that that was appropriate, but when we start talking to tenants, you know, they may want some of that critical infrastructure, whether it be like the Eversource vault to be up on the second floor, but I think it's that balance between trying to respect resiliency, but also trying to respect their utility and their needs to access the equipment.
Yeah, okay, just I was more curious.
Yeah, but I would say, you know, the mechanical, there's a mechanical penthouse associated with this building, so obviously there's significant critical infrastructure that would be further up in the building.
Right, because when you got to replace it, a crane sometimes is a lot easier than taking down walls to move it around. Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. A really great landscaping plan. Just wanted to commend you on that plant list. Looking really good. I guess, you know, the only question I had was related to some of the open space goals that were brought up, which are all really good. I guess when I see a project like this, one question that comes up is how I guess public access is managed for the open space amenities that are being proposed?
So this is basically for the tenants of the site and visitors to the site. We're not trying to invite in people from the outside. This is an industrial park. There's trucks all over the place. This is not a place where we're trying to invite people, and it's interior to the edge of the water, so it's not like it's going to be a draw, if you will.
Right. Okay, that was really it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no, I got to echo Commissioner Long's saying that appreciate the landscape plan that really complies and gets at the spirit. I've always been asking, even though a lot of it's not even in jurisdiction, so that's always a good thing to see. Couple sort of just larger questions that are, I guess, one is that typically we've had EDIC reps kind of come to these meetings, and I was wondering if there was one tonight? Slash, I don't think I've seen them as regularly as they used to be coming.
No, according to William Epperson, he believes that this commission doesn't require their presence at these hearings in the Marine Park. I actually invited Richard McGinnis to come, and he is having dinner with his mother this evening.
That's
Fine, I did Commissioner Wilson? I was going to say, you might have missed it. I I remember we had a meeting on the RDA for the master plan itself covering
Yep.
the entire, so that was pretty recent, but I don't remember EDIC coming.
I don't remember them being there either for that. That's sort of what I was getting at.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
I don't know if they were, but anyways, either way, I thought we'd kind of come to an understanding that as a courtesy, they would come, given sort of it is their district and they are the landowners. That, you know, we wanted to kind of get a long-term sense of what was going on. I guess that kind of goes to my next question, which is for the flood resilience improvements, the quarter million that you were remarking, is that internal to the project, or is that going into that district-wide fund that they're trying to stand up?
That's going into the district-wide fund. Aside from our resiliency, this is on top of
Okay, that makes sense. And I guess just the larger comment that I would give Chair Parker is that, you know, sort of is that this kind of gets back to, I think it was not to name names, but the Bullfinch Crossing project where we're in like the parcel is largely out of our jurisdiction by a matter of inches. And the proponent is doing what is right. I think we need to kind of flag sometimes that like the proponent isn't always going to write by the book and apply to the thing, the strictures that we would be placing on a similar thing that it would be in our jurisdiction, a matter of inches vertically and feet across a road away, so. It's good to see that there's sort of a district-level understanding of this, so.
Yeah. I agree. I agree. I think when they go through the BPDA review for for projects in the flood plain, a lot of what we're looking for gets captured. And I'm remembering now, I was looking back, it was Rich McGinnis who came in, and I don't know if you were you were here for that, but that was a pretty good overview of what was going on. But Elena will definitely relay that back to William. Your concern. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I just had a question. I want to join with the comments about the landscaping. We've been counting trees now. Do you know how many new trees you're going to be planting in that area? Are there going to be trees?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. I could look at the plan and count, but that would take us a while.
So I guess, are there trees now there?
There's, the site is either building pavement, and it's where all the trucks are. There is a strip of mulched area on the street side of the sidewalk on Northern Avenue that has probably ten or so trees that will come out as part of this, but as we mentioned, we are going to significantly increase the planting area and the pervious area on the site.
So can I assume that if you're taking out trees, you're putting in at least 10 more?
Um.
Christine, you? Yes. Yes.
Thanks, Christine.
No problem, so Christine Wilson.
Kopley Wolf, she's our landscape architect on the project.
Thanks, Ken. So we are planting over 60 trees on this project.
That's wonderful. Thank you. You've answered the question.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging a Twitter handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Ken, I know that I'm pretty confident that the order of conditions is in good shape. I know that you went back and forth with Elena over the past week.
Yes, we appreciate the work that she put in and her consideration.
Fantastic, okay. Elena, any hands raised? I don't see any.
I see no hands, and we also have nothing in the inbox.
Okay, great. So with that, I would make a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
Second?
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 006. Nope, sorry. Unassigned DEP file number from Child's Engineering on behalf of Charlestown Commerce Center Realty Trust for the proposed installation of a stone riprap revetment within a washed-out area of an existing deteriorated seawall located at 50 Terminal Street in Charlestown. Resource areas are riverfront, waterfront, designated port area, coastal bank, and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Charlie Roberts from Charlton Engineering.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, just myself.
Okay, floors are yours.
Thank you. We did chase DEP to try and get a project number, and apparently it's coming very shortly, maybe tomorrow. So, but anyway, so yeah, just so if you go to the next slide, this is over by the, it's part of the Charlestown Commerce Center. It's a very thin strip of land right down the west side of the Mass Port, the Autoport over by Terminal Street. So if you go to the next slide. So you can see there on the left, the Autoport there, and then the thin strip of land, and really just it's a thin strip. It used to have, you know, a bit more of a wall and a pier next to it, but that's obviously like a a lot of the marine facility kind of long gone at this point, but this strip actually belongs to the Commerce Center, but it does above the Mass Port property from that. That's the whole property line to the right in red, and then the shaded areas kind of where we're focusing on this in this presentation or this application from where it's had the majority of the erosion. So if you go to the next slide, this is some of the erosion in that area that you saw in the red shaded area. What you're seeing in the left photo there is the fence line for the Mass Port property, and you can see that there's one fence post or now two fence posts that are have been, basically, the material's been eroded away and kind of hanging down there now. So obviously, Mass Port were concerned about the security to the Autoport and have asked the Commerce Center to repair the slope to to secure up the fence line again from that. And then obviously, just looking a little bit further down on the right, on the photo on the right-hand side, you can see a little bit more erosion. There are, if you go to the next slide, you see a couple of the existing sections there. You can see whether some, you know, minor erosion as you get closer to the to the inshore end of it or closer to Terminal Street, then as it gets out, the erosion starts to get a little bit worse from that to the point where it's undermined that fence line in the last photo that we saw. So if you go to the next slide, what we're proposing to do is do some repairs, sort of, they look like in twofold, you just want to replace with some of the material that's been washed away, but obviously we want to replace it with some larger stone that is not going to get washed away from that, and then restore the slope back and then restore the security to the fence. And the areas that are less undermined, we want to place some Jersey barriers along there just to help minimize or mitigate the amount of washout from the slope in the future, so we're not back here in a year. Another year's time to do a little bit more of a repair to the wall. And if you go to the next slide, there's just outlines of two different areas. So you can see to the north of that slope, the area where you've got the kind of the stone hatch, that's the area where we're proposing to do the riprap slope along the what we call as coastal bank there, and then you've got the Jersey barriers that are further down that you can see in the dashed hatch. You know, from that, obviously, you can see from this, this is along the Mystic River from there. And obviously, very close to the to the property line of Mass Port, and that's part of the reason for doing that. The goal is to try and do the work from the Mass Portland and to try and minimize any vessels having to come in within the area from that. So the total repair there is from the stationing on there is five plus 25 to five, to six plus 25, so 100 foot of weatherstone repairs are going to be about another 150 foot of Jersey barriers that's being placed on top of the existing seawall to help mitigate any kind of wave action along the slope there to kind of head off any future or too much erosion from that. And that's, that's, that's all I have. If anyone's got any questions on the next slide.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you just talk about the erosion controls a bit here?
Yeah, we got, we actually got feedback from from a DMF today. And they mentioned asking to ask them erosion controls. So the plan was, if you go back to slide, it's probably to the plan. Obviously, it's a very, it's a tidal site, so low tide, everything's dry from that. So the goal will be to try and do the majority of the work there. But we could put a tabidity curtain out to protect any work that's being done within the area from that.
Was that the comment that you got back?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Fantastic. So, okay, that was my question. Elena, do you have anything?
I was just going to fly that same letter. It's, if anybody's interested in seeing the full letter, it's in the drive folder for the commission's review.
Oh. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
You're leaving that deteriorated timber pile field?
Correct, yes.
And the timber cribs that you're bringing the stone, new stone revetment down on, is that in good shape?
So we're going to try and use that as a toe from that. It's, it's what we think, we're not 100% sure, but we're looking at the structure further around. There was granite blocks on top of that. And then it looks like some of the granite blocks have collapsed, and then, and so the timber, but the hope is that they're not in terrible shape, but enough to support some of that stuff, and the hope is that once they're contained, you know, with that, they'll stay in that shape from it.
She's not worried about any rot occurring. That seems to be the foundation of your new wall. It just seems that it's wet and then dry and wet and dry. You know?
Yeah, I mean, we're trying, yeah. No, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and it's, you know, it's definitely, definitely a concern. I mean, but we felt that this was a better solution to address this immediate kind of, we try not to do this as an emergency repair. But obviously, it's something that needs to be done, addressed, you know, quickly from that, and rather than trying to drive, you know, sheet pile on the front or trying to excavate all that out and get much deeper in there, we're trying to just take care of this urgent problem as soon as possible, you know, from them. All right, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Long?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Okay, video. In terms of, yeah, so going off of Commissioner Sullivan's question, is this for the timeline relative to say like winter storms and stuff like that? Like, how sensitive are you guys to that?
So it started to get much more significantly worse, and that's why it was flagged initially between the time of our first inspection, and then we went out there again. You know, a couple of months later, and another one of the one of the fence posts have been undermined from that, so it is actively undermining and more quickly than in the past. We did a historical of some of the shoreline in that area. And more more quickly than in the past, we did a historical of some of the shoreline in that area. And uh it definitely it's been it's been more accelerated than that in this year. And I don't think, you know, that I think there's a combination of factors and it's not all winter storms or storm events from that. Um but you know, it's one of those things that once some of it starts to go, then a lot of it quickly follows, you know, from that. Um we're seeing what was from a soil point of view that we're seeing what's exposed now is a bit more of a clay layer, clay layer. Eroded away is more the subsoil from that around that fence line. So. The hope is to be able to just put that back in and on top of the clay layer there and then that will be uh. Hopefully hold everything in in place and protect the the, you know, the the shoreline in that area.
Okay, no, no, that's helpful and um. Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming to us before it's an emergency, sir. So um I guess. One thing was is 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 this in a designated port area and sort of do you need to maintain functionality? I'm seeing nothing. Um, it was just one of those things where it's like you have this old timber pile field versus like the wind offshore wind testing. Center in the background. That's one of those Boston dichotomies. So I was just curious.
No, we we had a conversation with Massport. We met out there um a few weeks ago to discuss with them because it's the the bigger concern is right in front of their scales. Um and with the time of year, uh with everything else that those scales get used for salt, so. Depending what Mother Nature is going to throw at us, it could be uh it's quite a tight area. So but we are. Going to coordinate with them to be able to, you know, obviously provide a secure area for us to work, but also maintain that fence when it comes. You know, inland a little bit on a temporary basis whilst they're doing the work, but we really hope that the work's not going to take. You know, more than a week or 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 two to to really get done. Once they get in there, the hope is to try and get in there, get out and then get out of their way. And put the secure fence back in place.
Okay, and then last question, we'd seen a proposal up on a mass DOT site well further up the mystic. For a quote unquote living seawall that didn't manifest itself, but it did raise sort of the like. You know, you're using a gravity based solution, which is awesome to see. Um, they did consider some benching in terms of just letting like some natural vegetation be able to establish on that site. I was wondering if that's. Possible with, you know, very minimal alteration or whether that's just given. Whatever the geotech on the site and, you know, the existing erosion pattern, so that's not desirable.
It's it's a little bit tight to try and get a suitable slope. Um so we can minimize the 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 slope size by making it the the steeper the slope, the more uh. The more unstable it is, a lot of, there's not a lot of land there before the mass port land to kind of make those changes to. Um but we can certainly take a take a look at that, but I think that, you know, I think with the the slope it's at is probably we don't want to go too much. Steeper, which we would in order to create those kind of flat areas to 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 do that, um you know, from that.
That's like, yeah, not every site's right for it, but I just wanted to kind of get a sense of like whether you had any play. So, okay, that's all. For me, thank you guys.
Um Commissioner, what site were you referring to further up on the Mystic?
Uh, it's the Charlestown Bus Yard.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where they were putting in the bike path and everything like that.
Yep, got it. Thank you. Um Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, I was just. A little bit curious about the stability of the Jersey barriers. It looks like you're. Going to put them, they'll be partly uh, we'll have soil over them. Um but anyway, I'm just. I'm just wondering if you could speak to that. How much wave action is there? There will they be overtopped? Are you, is there any concern about how? Stable they will be? I don't know what they were.
Um, it's it's more, they're not designed to be watertight, but we just want to make sure that any material there that's got some kind of barrier to stop it washing out. It's not a, it's not a, definitely not a completely foolproof solution, but we wanted to do something that was fairly minimally impactful. Um but would help would help protect the shoreline a little bit, a little bit further. There's, it's just, it's quite difficult to do much. In that area because of the existing scale and because at low tide you can't, it's hard to get any vessels in from the water side. Um, you know, from that. So we were trying to find something that would um hopefully um, you know. Minimize now future damage from that. There's some of those are a little bit more exposed. Obviously, it's kind of graduated how much the uh. There the erosion there is. So for the most part, they'll be on the top of the the remaining um timber wall from that. You know, on a on the, there's an existing base of stone within the timber. Um timber cribbing system, so they'll be, they should be fairly stable, you know, on that. And then that should minimize the amount of. Um material that gets washed out, you know, from it and and just they will go over top to high tide. Um from that, we're not trying to stop that, but we're just trying to minimize the amount of waves that are coming in there and the amount of material. Or that's being kind of washed completely out.
I I understood. I guess I'm just, I I assume you think they will be stable. I guess I just wanted to hear you say that that they are. They're not going to move into the water or out of the water topple.
Yep. That's the pun.
Okay. Nothing more for me.
Excuse me. Okay, um. Charlie, uh you have had a chance to look at the order of conditions. They're okay. There are a lot of them. Uh and what I would say is uh any that don't apply to you wouldn't be applying, whether it be dredging or um. Uh or otherwise. In other words, okay, okay, good. Eleanor, any hands raised? Any comments?
I don't see any hands raised um and no comments otherwise.
Okay, great, thank you. And Charlie, thank you for uh popping in there in the chat about Rich giving that presentation. I wish I'd seen that before I. Went back through my records here, um but thank you for doing that. Um so with that, I'd entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
Oh, Chair Parker, oh, without the D E P file number, do we? Sorry.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to um continue the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six, nothing. So Charlie, next time, uh no need for a presentation. Um, we'll just uh deal with the order of conditions at that point. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, uh next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment and extension to the original order of conditions for D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, eight, seven. And Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero two one from Beta Group on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the. Proposed demolition and reconstruction of a playground and other site improvements located at Castle Island. Twenty ten William J. Day, yeah, William J. Day Boulevard, South Boston. Uh resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal dune waterfront area, one hundred foot buffer to coastal dune. And one hundred foot buffer to coastal beach. Eleanor, do we have a presentation for this or were you going to brief us on it?
Uh, there should be a presentation for this. I believe we have some slides.
Fantastic. Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, my name's Laura Kraus from Beta Group. I'm the permitting specialist on this project. Also here from Beta Group is Scott Ritter. The landscape architect on the project and Sandy Libby from D C R. She's the project manager for D C R.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Um so as you mentioned, this project uh was previously before you and received an order of conditions. Uh it was. Uh issued back in twenty twenty one in the summer of twenty twenty one. Um and we have a couple of project revisions um that we are requesting your approval on today. Uh this. Uh figure here just shows the location of the playground in the overall con- context of um Castle Island. Kind of in that hatch circle area. If you could go to the next um. Slide here, uh. Kind of looks a little distorted, but um that's okay. So this uh slide here depicts the the revisions, the. Uh image on the left is the originally approved. Uh plan that was approved and then the the image on the right is the newly proposed project. Um, originally, the plan was to redo the entirety of the uh the concrete walkways. Around the playground um through coordination with the uh ADA group at D C R. That was determined to not be needed. So those areas were um were decreased and limited only to the areas where uh we needed to make revisions to the concrete. To comply with ADA. Uh, the additional change uh on this on this plan is down on the right, lower right hand corner. You can see that there's the removal of a. Uh pathway. There was a small removal of of impervious surface here with this new proposal. Um, in what, because that that pathway is not a pathway that uh D C R would like available to to folks. So that it it. Provides access to a a maintenance facility that um is not really. A desired pathway between a playground and a maintenance facility. So they decided to remove that as part of the project. Um. So that's that's the the uh proposed changes in terms of the plans. We are also asking for revision of two. Um and this is not in the presentation, but uh there are vision of two conditions. The first being um condition thirty seven, which requires. The plans be stamped by a P E um. Uh other orders of conditions that have been issued by Boston Concom sense have included uh are allowed for plans to be stamped by a P. Uh or an R uh landscape architect um as appropriate. And this is a a project that was, you know, appropriately designed by a landscape arch- architect. So we're requesting the change of that condition and then um D C R is also requesting. Removal of the condition related to snow storage because this is a playground. D C R does not remove snow. Or or manage any snow on their playgrounds. That's that's something that D C R does not do across. Um there, they they don't, they do not plan to do that that at this facility and the project will be constructed outside of winter time. So there's no. Um concern with any cons- uh construction periods, no management. Um so those are the uh the requests as part of this um. Uh this request that was filed.
Okay, so thank you for that. Um I don't remember um any extension, any request for extensions that have asked us to. To um alter the conditions and I'm going to go to Commissioner Herbst first for her um. Reaction to the presentation while I'm looking through the regs um regarding um what we can do for extensions. Um so Commissioner Herbst, um what are your thoughts on this?
Uh, I think that the applicant may have referenced something in their letter about that. Could be wrong. I read it last week. Uh, could could you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. So we're requesting an amendment and an extension, so not just a an extension of the order, but an amendment to the order of conditions. Um to amend the conditions as as requested. And this is a a practice that we've seen and uh on with other conservation commissions. And we are aware of um that occurring in in Boston in the past. Um so this is a a similar request that has been um requested by D C R in the past.
So, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just saying, so if you're if you're if your application to us went through the proper amendment request, I would say that's.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Yep, yeah, I just found that. Okay, okay, sorry for the confusion. Um. Okay, uh Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Um, I don't have anything on this other than um as far as just to provide some some shed some light, I guess, on how staff had handled. Um these filings, we noticed this in the Herald, um which we wouldn't need to do if it was strictly a request for an extension. So we did that to sort of satisfy the pieces. Um of the of the amended order of conditions request and then. Um, yeah, so that that was kind of how we had gone about that um to try to satisfy sort of both parts of the request.
Yep, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm just fine. I'm just catching up with that right now. I didn't quite catch that before. Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Um, did I miss that? Does this playground have a fence around it?
No, it does not.
And there wasn't any concern with that child that got left and nobody paid attention to him? I thought there'd be a outpouring of people wanting to have the thing fenced in. That's, I'm just curious. I didn't know if I had missed it. Other than that, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Long?
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry, wrong, Mo. Um, I mean, great question, Commissioner Long, but uh sorry, uh Sullivan. But uh, yeah, no further questions given the project at hand. I think that's more of a existential one. That will just leave hanging.
Yeah, hopefully not based on a a real situation, right? But anyway, um Commissioner Richmond?
Um, me too, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Herbst, anything else?
No, no questions.
Okay, um. Okay, as far as the um conditions you want to um have removed. Um, what we've done in the past is um allow D C R to provide us with their um. Snow management plan, uh their global slow snow management plan. For the particular district. I don't know if it's statewide or for the district. Um but um a link to that plan for our records. And what was the other condition? I'm sorry, I'm having problems with my Google Drive here. What was the other condition that you um? Wanted to amend?
Conditions, sorry, um. Thirty seven, which states that the applicant must submit final plans stamped by a a P E. And we just are requesting that it uh state that the final stamp plans uh be, final plans be stamped by a registered P E land server. Surveyor or landscape architect as applicable.
Yep, um and I'll go to Commissioner Sullivan. Um, we've allowed that before, correct? As long as it's stamped by someone with the proper proper expertise.
Yeah, I I think most of the time it's a P E because of the construction stuff going on, but this is above ground, you know, playing around with stones and stuff, so. Not to dump an eye, that's the way it goes.
I would, I would just say as a former landscape architect though, like, I mean, I I would love it that R L A's can stamp things. Um but I I'm I'm now following up on Commissioner Sullivan's concern and I'm not seeing the thing he's asking for. In the the description of work, which would be alarming to me as a land, registered landscape architect, because that's like playground one on one. Senator, so. I mean, yes.
Okay.
I don't think it's outside of the realm of responsibility that a P E or an R L A would be taking on in terms of liability. Given the history of the site.
Okay, understood. So the um condition would read, so if a landscape architect would not stamp it. Um, is that what you're getting at? That you don't think you they could get a landscape architect to uh stamp?
No, I think any, I think an R L A should be able to stamp this and that's the whole point of being able to. Um, yeah, the type of work that's being proposed. It's just. The standard of care that I took as a registered landscape architect would have included fence around a playground.
Okay, understood. Okay, um. Okay, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I, yes, I believe I hand just went up.
Okay.
Or sorry, well. Sandra, I guess, I'm sorry, before, if if, yeah.
Okay, Sandra?
I don't hear you, Sandy.
There we go. Looks like you're unmuted. And now muted. I'm assuming that Sandy is your landscape architect?
Uh, Sandy, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, Sandy Libby is the P M from D C R. She's the playground planner. So um. That site does not have an existing fence and um it has, you know, the historic. Uh fort shape around the outside and we, you know, D C R did not want to put the fence up there that. They'd be running through the park um through most of it and then uh towards the beach on one side. So there didn't. It's not like they'd be running out into traffic or anything like that. So it's well within the within the park structure there, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um so with that, I would entertain a motion to uh grant a request for an amendment and extension to. Yes.
Yeah, sorry to bring this up and um. I think that they were saying that they aren't going to do any snow removal.
D C R does not uh plow their playgrounds during the winter?
Oh, okay.
But I typically, we just say, well, then you can ignore that. Um. But anyway, I just wanted to note that the request is a little different.
Okay, um. Typically, what we ask for when we get this is the uh, as I said before, the link to the um. Snow removal plan, which has satisfied the conditions or satisfied us in other um. Other scenarios. Um so would you be providing that link? You're saying um that you would. Uh want the condition deleted entirely, or you could provide us the link for your snow removal um management plan?
Um, I I believe that and unfortunately, I wish Sandy Sandy could speak to this. Um, I, I believe that, and unfortunately, I wish Sandy, Sandy could speak to this. Um, but based on previous discussions. Um, you know, ideally it'll be removed because it isn't really applicable to the site. Um, but if, if the commission felt strongly that you wanted the link, I mean, that, that is available and, and we could provide that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Um, okay. Um, well, a couple of things. One, yes, I believe we can provide um, the snow removal. Um, link, uh, I think uh, I've seen it, uh, Ruth Halfeld, who I work under in landscape architecture had it. Um, we certainly have it and somehow I can at least get it to you. Um, so I can provide that. The second thing um, that we're talking about that I really wanted to speak on is the fence. Um, so I'm a certified playground safety inspector, have been over for over twenty years. And I can say that the condition for a playground is required that no hazard be within a hundred feet. Of the playground. That is electrical hazard, um, traffic, parking lot, as we know in this playground situation. The parking lot is, is a significant distance away. The water is actually um, more than a hundred feet away from the playground. So as far as a standard of care, it is not required to have a fence around this um, playground. Um, we do have an adjacent playground over um, at Marine Park that's just been renovated and it has. Um, is fully fenced in and that's because there is um, a um. Hazard within a hundred feet, as in it's completely surrounded by the road. Um, so, um. It's uh, it's very nice to be able to go. So a lot of people like to be able to go to a playground that's more open. Um, supervision is required of children at playgrounds. Um, and um, you know, parents. We regardless, because you um, also cannot depend on the security of. Everyone keeping the gates closed at a playground for certain, because there's uh, always two entrances into a playground. Um, is what we like to put so that in case anybody needs to exit and, you know, somebody's coming in a way, a certain way and they wanna get out the other way, they can. For whatever reason, safety reasons, um, there's, there's two exits. So um, oftentimes they get left open, unfortunately. And, and you really need to supervise your kids. And uh, that, that is definitely recommended at a public playground. So, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I don't see any other hands raised. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to um, grant a request. For an amendment and extension to the uh, original order conditions with the revision of the snow removal um. Condition to reflect that DCR will be providing their um, snow removal management plan to um, staff.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a que- I have a question um, on, on, based on what was just said. Um, I'm not sure I, I understand why um, the, they've asked not to have. A um. An engineer sign these documents. And is it because they have the um, the playground planner?
Uh, they're, they are suggesting a landscape architect um, would stamp the plans.
And, and, and is that the person who just answered the question?
No, I'm the cer- I'm the project manager and a certified playground safety inspector and work for the DCR. We have hired a consultant, which is a landscape architect firm to do this project with us, not an engineering firm.
So, okay, and they, and they're the ones who are gonna sign the, the plans?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I was very confused. I'm not confused anymore. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a, uh.
Sarah Parker, just to follow up on that. Um, Sandra, thank you for coming. I guess you were well off mute. It was just more of a. Uh, communication issue. Anyways, thank you for clarifying. I am not versed in that, but know to stay well away of those types of things. That I do not understand fully. Um, I guess, I, A, I was not aware that this was that far from a designated hazard. Um, I guess. If, if there is a moment in something like an RDA that you're, that this, that you're requesting. Um, amended, sorry. Um, you know. Again, it isn't within the standard set forth within the ADA, but obviously given.
It's not ADA. It's not ADA. For, for the fencing? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 not for the fencing. The purpose of the project is to provide safe, upgraded amenities to the users of the playground while providing compliance with center set forth. By the ADA. So I would just say is that, given the experience that has been had on this playground. I get it is within the compliance standards of the ADA. It may not be within the spirit of understanding folks with disabilities. And putting the onus on parents and reading the signage and everything like that, because there are hazards nearby. And I, I would, I would think that you would wanna be a little more sensitive to that. Then sort of just saying, hey, it meets the letter of the law. And.
I, I, I wanna say that I'm not saying that it meets the, that, that just, oh, it meets the letter of the law.
Sure.
This is a playground that um, that was, is, is designed the way it is. We are not changing. The walls that are around it. We are not um, changing the perimeter. All we are doing is removing. The inside playground. Um, and replacing it. So for us.
I guess, yes, it's one type of access, sorry. It is not. Anyways, I, I'm not gonna die on this hill, unfortunately, but it's one of those things where. I would encourage an agency like the DCR to think about what's the next project. It might not be this one. And that there are considerations for places like Martin Richards Park. That meet and exceed these sorts of things that are also in equally. You know, difficult circumstances in terms of whether the gate's left open or not.
Okay, so I was just, just commenting on that, but I am certainly not in any way. Negating this situation at all. I'm just saying that it's not included in this project. And that DCR at this time is definitely um. Uh, doing a full comprehensive look at all the fencing and railings around the perimeter of, of Castle Island. And that if there is a change made to this playground, it would, it would be at a later time. It's not gonna be within this project. So we are definitely not negating it. And I didn't mean to insinuate that in any way, and we are not, but I, I also don't think that. I think it's irresponsible for us not to do this maintenance in an, in a very quick and effective. Time, because right now we have ten swings that are unusable. And I just had to take them down. So there are no swings right now there at all. So from a safety standpoint, which is number one. For sure, having good, safe equipment for our kids to use is very important. And so getting this project expedited and in and replaced. As we do our comprehensive look, because as you guys know, we have other projects that we're doing, the bathrooms. Um, is another big project that we're looking at at this facility. And so there's all kinds of things going and improvements to the um. To the fort and, and we're really taking a comprehensive look. So just because this is moving forward does not in any way mean that we're not looking. At everything.
No, that's okay. I'm glad you put it in the bigger picture.
Sorry.
We're getting a little, we're getting a little, excuse me, Sandy, we're getting a little far afield here. So let's, we'll just. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so um, I asked for a motion to be entertained. Um, is there anybody going to make that motion?
I moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye, so that carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment and extension to the original order conditions for D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, eight, eight. And Boston file number twenty, twenty-one dash zero, two, two, from Beta Group on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed demolition. And reconstruction of a playground on, and other site improvements at Constitution Beach, Colleridge and Barnes Avenue. Uh, in East Boston, uh, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal dune waterfront area, one hundred foot buffer to coastal. Dune and one hundred foot buffer to coastal beach. Um, same team? As last.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you. Okay. I see you have a short presentation there.
Yeah, it looks very similar, just different site.
Great, thank you.
Okay, again, for the record, Laura Kraus from Beta Group with Scott Ritter from Beta Group and Sandy Libby from DCR. Uh, project location is along Constitution Beach. Our resource areas, as you said, are um, L S C S F and coastal dune. Here are the beaches um, uh, significantly altered. It's raked. And um, the, but there is coastal dune washover. So the site actually functions as coastal dune and part of this project. Originally was actually restoring some of the dune functions. Go to the next slide. And these are slightly distorted, but you can see here there's um, the. Project or the design on the top, that was the originally approved. The design on the bottom is the design that we are seeking approval for today. Um, two small revisions, uh, the, there was a wheelchair ramp that was removed at the um, north. Western corner um, off of the parking lot. That was determined not to be necessary. And then the planting area um, in that northwest corner of the parcel was also decreased just due to um. Maintenance issues with, with DCR. So they just um, kind of shrunk that, that planting area down a little bit. However, we maintained our um, like beachfront uh, coastal dune that we are proposing along the waterfront. And uh, same requests for the same uh, two. Conditions, condition thirty-seven with respect to stamping by a, a landscape architect. And uh, requesting a revision to condition forty-four regarding the snow storage to uh, allow us to provide you with the statewide. Um, snow removal plan.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Um, I do not have anything on this. I just wanted to get flag that um, we're gonna be switching off. I'm gonna start sharing my screen, so there might be a quick break here.
Okay, great. And properly notice like the last one, which I missed on the last one, right?
Correct, yes.
Yep, okay. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Commissioner Sullivan left, but I can do my best impersonation of him if you.
Commissioner Long?
No questions for me.
Okay, that wasn't a very good impersonation.
Oh, can you put hoods on the catch basins?
Yeah.
That's a good.
Commissioner Wilson?
No questions either. Appreciate always seeing our life stamp something.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, I do have a question. The, the area that you're not planting, is that dune or what, what resource area is?
Uh, there's currently a, a lawn there with trees growing. It's, and that's gonna be what's. Gonna be there at the end of the day, too. It's gonna, it look just like what it does now.
Okay, thank you. Nothing more.
Great. Um, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Um, and we also didn't receive anything in our inbox.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that I'd entertain a motion to amend and extend the order conditions. The original order conditions for D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, eight, seven, Boston file number twenty, twenty-one dash zero, two, one. With the deletion of, no, with the um. Conditions reflecting that a landscape architect can stamp the plans and that DCR will provide their um, district um, snow removal plan. Uh, to staff.
I moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, uh, there's also been a number of continuances continued up in um, notice of intent for D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, zero, four. And Boston file number twenty, twenty dash zero, zero, seven, D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, seven, two, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-one. Dash zero, one, zero, and D E P file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, six, one, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three. Dash zero, five, one. Um, the commission will now begin its regular meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda, um, our administrative updates.
Sorry, I was talking to myself. Hello, I'm unmuted now. Um, so for administrative updates, we have um, two main updates. One of them was an administrative approval, which was processed for um, for D C R. There is uh, an initiative happening in the city currently to upgrade pedestrian crosswalks to be ADA compliant. And um, there's a number of locations that they are hoping to do, some of which will be. Um, some of which are in the uh, Concom's jurisdiction. However, these ones were strictly within L S C S F. Um, and they provided us with a map that indicated the ones that they were hoping to um, get permission for under an administrative approval. And then there's a number that are marked on that map outlined in blue, which um, they are planning to file for. So those are, the ones that are outlined in blue are not included. In this administrative approval. Um, it was, so the letter was sent um, with the areas marked and with some special conditions attached. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have on this.
I don't have any questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Nope, okay.
Okay. And then um, the second update that we have is on uh, a, so what we were considering and, I mean, while still are. Uh, excuse me, considering a potential enforcement order. Um, this is for some dumping that was happening at one sixty-one Reservation Road. Um, the situation has developed. I believe the last time that uh, we shared this with you. There had been some um, treated wood which had been dumped right alongside uh, Mother Brook. And since then, the situation has developed in that, that has now been buried. And so now there are buried. Large planks of treated wood, um, with nails sticking out of them right next to Mother Brook. Uh, there's a number of photos in the drive folder for the commission's review. And um, we were coming to you tonight to um, see whether it made sense to the commission to. Uh, go through with an enforcement order on this and um, start to work to resolve uh, this action. There's also a document in the drive which um, provides a timeline of what has happened. Um, since we were first notified of the uh, of the issue.
That's amazing. So you were notified of the issue. Someone was able to take pictures of the uh, wood and then it was buried. During independence, you know, that's, oh my gosh. Okay, so you're looking for a ratification of an enforce, uh, or the um, authority to issue an enforcement order?
Uh, yes, and um, and that would be something that we then um, send out along with the signature pages. So. Um, that would be, yeah, one of the items that we were bringing to the commission tonight to see um, if you had any questions or any further thoughts on, on appropriate action to take here.
Yeah, I have a question. It's, it's uh, Commissioner Richmond, do we, is that?
I think someone else was, Commissioner, let's just go down the line, someone else.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Long?
Uh, so I remember last hearing when this came up, the, didn't the owner actually tell you or tell somebody, Eleanor, that they had placed the wood there?
Uh, yes, so that was, and that's one of the things that um, we are. Trying to make as clear as possible in the enforcement order and in the narrative is um, who brought this to our attention as well as um. Who it was, who was, who was doing the work. So there, there seems to be a bit of a question mark with the property owner. Versus the um, property manager. And so that was the other question was, is, is it the property manager? Is it the property owner? Um, and so we're likely going to be sending this to. We think two, two people. Um, and, and we've been working, well, Dee Dee's been doing a lot of great research. Um, just within the city, trying to sort of sort out who the appropriate person is to send this to. Um. And so, so that's, that's still what we think the situation is based on the information that, that was reported to us.
And then what about the burial of the wood? That's just such an odd thing to have happened. So is the idea that. It was one of, or both of those two who did the burying as well?
Yes, yeah. So, so our understanding so far is the same person had the wood taken out of. A basement um, brought over to basically like the um, the, the bank and um, and then decided to bury it.
Gosh, okay, yeah. And those pictures that I guess there was somebody from the Ponce River Watership Station sent, those are pretty. Illustrative, so props to them. Um, yeah, that's all I got. Thank you for flagging this.
Absolutely. And oh, I, sorry, um, I also just wanna note, so um, some of these updates are from last week. But we also conducted a site visit yesterday morning and just confirmed that. The wood was buried. That is the state that it is currently in. So um, we confirmed that yesterday morning.
Right, thank you.
Amazing. Um, Commissioner Wilson, if I didn't know any better, um, I would have sworn you just cut and paste the uh. The party's names here and you're doing a Google search. Am I right on that?
Wow, guilty.
I was starting to do it myself in your.
I am doing multiple Google searches. They're all using Google. It's just internal and external. Anyways, I don't know. I have a vague recollection of Golden Horn having past issues with this and I can't find it, but.
Oh, I'll try to, thank you for flagging that. Yeah, we will track to see if we can find anything in the drive.
Yeah, I just, it 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 sounds familiar for this sort of a thing. Um, and. Either way, it's sort of falls under the category of it seems like it's can be remedied fairly quickly. And if there's a nudge that's needed, that sounds okay. But it's just a it's a repeat offender, then. You know, maybe we don't go down that road.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Richmond, you've been patient, uh, patient. Um, what'd you have?
I have done you myself. Yeah, I I guess my question is, is um, is this the fastest way? To um flag um an enforcement action?
So um, yeah, I guess the answer would be would be no. Um, I um. Basically, the conversations that I had with uh folks in DEP and some of the trainings they've also been to. Um, just made me a little bit hesitant to move forward with like a complete enforcement order before I brought it to the commission. And just wanted to make sure that um you didn't have any questions. And I think especially with um with. Chris, Dee Dee and myself all being relatively new and this being one of the first proper enforcement orders that we would be issuing. We just wanted to make sure that we were crossing all of our Ts, so that if anybody questioned um the timeline or our methods or anything like that, that we. Um, you know, that we make sure that we're covering our bases and also just um, you know. I guess protecting any decisions that the commission is making. Um, in the future, I imagine that there is a more sort of. Um streamlined way of doing this. I mean, I know that administratively there are avenues to enforce or to, excuse me, to um issuing an enforcement order. With only one signature required, um, and and then bringing it to the commission after the fact and obtaining the rest of the signatures is my understanding. Um, and that's something that that we would be able to do in a situation where, for example, the wood had not yet been buried. So given the fact that the wood had already been buried, we figured it made more sense to just go ahead and and bring it to you, make sure that, you know, we're not missing anything here. Um, for example, Commissioner Wilson, thank you for flagging that there may have been past issues with Golden Horn. That's something that'll be very useful for us to to include. Um, in that in that documentation as well. So, sorry, that's a, that's a long way of saying that this is um not the fastest way of going about this. But this was kind of what we thought would be the the most diligent way of going about the uh potential enforcement order here.
Okay, that's a, that's a great answer and probably a very, a very smart one. Um. Did you uh have any, um, I I heard something a few minutes ago that said that you had either talked to. Or somebody had had notified you about the fact that the wood was there and buried. Is that correct? Did I misunderstand that?
No, no, that's correct. So um, this was brought to our attention by the um. Sorry, I keep the Nippon for Watershed Association, somebody with them, they have um a stormwater hotline. And uh, this had been called in um through the stormwater hotline. The person who reported it wishes to remain anonymous. Um, but they were able to communicate with the person who had reported it and um were able to get some more information from them. And then uh they relayed that information to us. And then we conducted two site visits to to confirm everything and make sure that we had um everything, you know, recorded correctly.
Did you have an opportunity to talk to anybody with responsibility for the site?
Uh, no, no, we do, we're not able to do that.
Okay, and and is that because they have not responded to your request to talk or because you haven't asked them?
No, we, so we haven't reached out to them. Um, so this would be, this would be our point of contact is is sending out this enforcement order. If the commission decides that that's the appropriate action here.
Okay, I thank you very much, Elaine.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, so will you ask them, will you, is this just in order to remove it uh and restore the property?
So, yeah, so um basically let them know that what they're doing is uh against state law. And then what they've done is against state law. They would then um have to appear at the uh preferably the next uh hearing and be. Whoops, sorry, that was my mouse. If I keep forgetting, I'm sharing the screen. Um, and uh they'd have to appear at the next hearing and answer any questions that the commission has. And um, put together a plan of some sort to uh sort of remedy remedy the things that they've already done. So um, that's that's something that they would hopefully work with staff before the hearing to kind of start to come up with a plan. And then be able to ideally present that to the commission and and get any feedback.
I guess I'm. Wondering also about Alice's question, did you? Whether you have considered just reaching out to them first and seeing if you can get a uh. An agreement for them to just do, just remove it.
So we, yeah, so that was one of the things that we considered and and after we'd had a few conversations um with. Folks who are more well versed in this than than I am, um, it was recommended that we go with an enforcement order, given the fact that the wood had been buried. Um, and this would have more teeth behind it. It actually, it would have the the power of the enforcement rather than a letter that could be ignored.
Okay, great. I mean, if that's the advice you've given, um, I think that makes, I understand that. Uh, thanks.
But I absolutely, in the future, it's it's definitely helpful to know kind of what the commission's preferences are on how we communicate um in situations like this. I know that there's sort of a a range of enforcement issues that can come up. So um, yeah, so that that's also, I think, we're we're kind of learning. What um, what all of your preferences are and and, you know, what makes sense, how to best represent the the commission's interests here.
Yeah, I mean, that often you can get a sense, it sounds like you have, that this may not be one where they're open to that. But typically, I I I personally would favor seeing if you can resolve things um by talking to them, but.
Sounds good, yeah.
It isn't always true.
No, I think that's right. I think the fact that they, the wood got buried somehow um brings it into an enforcement order. I I agree with that. Um, also, um, it gives us the chance for them to um come in. And uh, uh, we can decide what the proper restoration is. Um, so, you know, we can't find. Um, uh, you know, uh monetary fines, uh, we're, we don't have that ability. Um, but if, you know, they come in and it turns out that where we can tell that, you know, this is all very intentional. It seems intentional, uh, and that we're, there were intentions that were um, uh, not good intentions here. Then um, you know, we may be able to do something, I wouldn't say punitive, but do something to improve the area in their restoration. To require, by requiring them to improve the area via the restoration plan. It feels like it's one of those situations, but until we talk to them, um, I don't want to jump to any conclusions. But again, if this was just. Um, the wood disposed of, uh, I'm sure like with Commissioner Herbst, I would prefer you call, see if they'll just remove it. Um, but this seems to have gone a step further, so. Okay, um, so with that, uh, I would entertain a motion to um authorize staff. To issue an enforcement order to the owners of the property to 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 located at one sixty one Reservation Road in Hyde Park.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
I'm sorry, I I, Elena, were you asking for owner and manager?
Yes, yeah, so we're we're, we'll be sending out a few, a few copies of this to a few different folks.
Can I make that a friendly change?
Uh, yes, so we have property owner and additional owners here. Who else?
Property owner and.
Potentially property manager is what we were thinking.
Okay, okay, so that is uh tacked on to the motion.
I don't know whether I can enter it into the record, given Google is such a reliable source. But um, an address of record for this same realty trust does link back to Revere. And there is a site in Revere that is listed that has had other issues that are similar to this one as well. Um, so whether I I whatever the that corporation entity is as well, should have some sort of representative. And it may be not the case that that address is actually linked to them, but.
Understood. There are no rules of evidence here, so you're perfectly, you're allowed to do that. Thank you.
Wikipedia?
Okay, now, I don't know. Was it bang or?
I'll push my luck, okay, sorry. I just, yeah, it really looks like Revere city councilors were aware of. An address that was linked to this corporation, which may or may not actually be linked in the real world as having similar sorts of issues with. And and uh, whatever.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That I think that that reinforces our uh intuition that this was very intentional. Um, okay. Okay, so I think the motion is on the floor with that friendly amendment. Um, um, Commissioner Long, uh, um. Will you accept the friendly amendment?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye. Sorry. Okay.
Okay, and I vote aye, so that carries five nothing. Okay, thank you, Elena. Um. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, acceptance of orders of conditions. They've both been continued. Um, because you haven't come to an agreement on the uh order of conditions?
Correct.
Okay, and they're both from DCR. Okay, interesting. Okay. Okay, uh, last item on the agenda and I reviewed, uh, thank you for doing the um meeting minutes. I reviewed them, made uh a few changes. Uh, so I would um entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October eighteenth, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five nothing. Okay, last item is a uh motion to adjourn. Um, quick question, we're the only ones on. Was there an incident at this playground? That we were talking about earlier regarding the fence? Commissioner Wilson, was something bad happen there or?
Sorry, yeah, no, it is sort of a bleak the way that Commissioner Sullivan was referring to it. Yeah, there was a young autistic child who wandered off and drowned and took several.
Oh, no!
Well, to be found.
That's right. I remembered that as we were talking. I thought it was somewhere else. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Okay, I understand, I understand the passion now. I like, wasn't catching it um at first there.
Dispassion was the part that was concerning to me, and that's why it was probably a little overboard, was say that you're reviewing. Safety procedures there. And also, your next thing up is the Constitution Beach, which does have a fence at least. Does have the fence on the not seaward side, like there, it's DCR.
Understood, understood. You don't have to explain yourself. She was just getting into a lot of other stuff and I was like. And then I was starting to get upset because I thought I had this memory. Um, and you know, honestly, it was.
Well, it's just, it's like anything with ADA, the standard of care is for the horizontal surface. And then it's nice if you include the inclusive play equipment, which is like the next level. And then it's like, no, the purpose is is all disabilities. And yes, you can encompass everything, but. You know, cognitive differences amongst children is not something that we shouldn't be. You know, precluding a playground renovation for, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, just give what you've just said, Michael. I mean, I am really upset by her answer. I mean, because she said, you know, um, we've, we've looked at this and blah, 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 blah. I mean, that's, that's disingenuous, really.
Yeah, it's just heartbreaking, heartbreaking. Um, so with that, um, okay. And thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for um, for making a point.
I mean, it it could happen anywhere and this was sort of, I mean, yeah, it shouldn't happen anywhere. And and it's their bad luck in terms of it was their playground, but it's, yeah. Having having playgrounds be wide open, yes, is something people like, but it is maybe not a risk that everybody realizes that they're taking. And I don't know how you. Sign for that flag for it, you know, prevent tragedies that are, you know, just. Like that, so I don't know. I would, I would have started with that and acknowledged that there was a larger, like, it's DCR. The presentation's completely inverted, so.
Okay, so with that, uh, motion to adjourn by acclamation and uh see everybody in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.